Join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Keim.
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Eidman. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No presentations awards, no personal appearances, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move to city administrator report.
We have an updated report at your seats, updating item four. Plans are about ready to go out for bidding on the sidewalk stormwater system on Jefferson next to Fourth Street. Got a price just before we came in here at about $66,213. It's an unbudgeted amount at this point. We have to see what's in our street budget before we talk about moving further. This is the broken up sidewalk that runs from Jefferson from Fourth down to Third Street, actually halfway there.
Okay, that's what it's gonna be. It only goes about halfway right now as well?
And that's why it would stay. It would stay at that same length. But we have to, since it is a ditch underneath the sidewalk, the sidewalk has to technically be a bridge because it's hollow underneath, so. So we'll look at that and get that to you. On item five, that issue is resolved. Item six, insurance coverage renewals will be coming to the board at the next meeting for liability casualty workers compensation. We have a meeting next Wednesday with Lakenin to look at the numbers. They haven't found anything that looks cheaper. In fact, workers compensation is going up, we know that. So we'll see the rest of the numbers next week. Item seven, we have begun requiring residential water customers to sign a waiver, a waiver form for release of their information. The state made a change in the Sunshine Law that makes that now a closed record for residential. Commercial is still open, but not residential. So we want to protect ourselves and we have created a form that they can fill out if they're gonna sell and they need the title company to ask for information or if it's, even if they're going to be doing it for a, to assist somebody who can't pay their water bill. We still need for them to sign off if we're going to release that information. So we'll work with whoever and however we can to make that, make it as easy as possible.
I'm sorry, so on that last scenario, well, maybe give me a scenario on that last example that you were referring to.
So if it was St. Vincent de Paul, who we've contacted and let them know what the issue is, they have not responded well to it, that if somebody needs assistance, if they want us to release that information on what they owe, then they need to have somebody sign off on it.
Yeah, they already said they're not gonna pay no more.
So that may change over time once they see, I mean, the paperwork's not that difficult. We've got it available at City Hall, we'll put it on the website. I mean, we'll, we'll make it available for people to be able to access it. But we understand it's a constraint and it doesn't make it as easy as what it has been in the past. But we do wanna, we've waited a year to get this in line and have now put it into our system. And also had this come in late this evening. Jokerst accepted the award for the waterline project, so now we're waiting on their bonding and insurance. Once that's in, then when they can set up a schedule and start work on it. Ninth Street is where they were supposed to start, maybe they go to Ninth, maybe to Rojer, but we've got that, we've got, we've got it moving along. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Back to number four on the sidewalk stormwater system on Jefferson next to North Fourth. Section of that was damaged by a truck. Did we get any kind of compensation from that company to fix that section?
I'm unaware of any report or anything that's put on my desk about that. I know it's been deteriorating over time and it looked like that was part of the deterioration. There was...
The one was, the one section was from a truck pulling out, a food truck from Valley Catholic that drove up onto the sidewalk and the sidewalk caved in.
We have not, I didn't, I didn't receive a report. I have no, no way, nobody to follow up with on that, so.
Happy, I have a question on the Fourth Street thing between Washington and Compton. I know the, you know, the water ponding was the issue and stuff, but, and I know it's kind of a issue for a couple of the homeowners along there. Have we come to an agreement on where the water's gonna go?
Not yet, waiting for the plans on that. So once they determine how to get the water from the street down to, there's a creek in behind those homes, then we can go to the homeowners and start talking to them about easements that would be needed.
So that's all private property on the lower side?
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Happy. We'll move to staff reports and we'll start with community development administrator David Bova.
Good evening. Just got a report there as far as historic preservation. We're actually, the next scheduled meeting is the 26th, but we're having a special meeting this coming Monday, the 12th. We had some applicants request a slightly quicker meeting so they get started on their projects and the commission obliged. So on the historic preservation grant we received, that vendor contract has now been signed and that event has been scheduled for the weekend of September 30th, October 1st. That's an exterior painting workshop. Building permit code enforcement numbers are there. On the sidewalk violations, you can see that the city property work is scheduled to begin this month and then once that is complete, we'll start prepping the other non-city properties. Planning and zoning, we had a rezoning application that was approved to recommend to you tonight. There'll be a public hearing here shortly and we'll go over that in a little more detail. Back page, you can see that as far as floodplain management, the flooding forecast for this area has been forecasted down. Obviously, it's been pretty dry lately to a less than 50% chance of flooding for the months of June, July, August. Property maintenance numbers are there and that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Okay, back to your building code enforcement, the sidewalk. So at that time, we'll know how many feet of sidewalk? I mean, are we gonna measure that so we know how many feet of sidewalk and what that potential cost would be to the city if we have to pick up the...
How many feet for the city or for the non-city?
Yeah, because we have a linear for price.
The city has already been budgeted out.
Yes.
For city property, but for private property that we might...
Correct. After we get through the city property, we will go out, mark those sections if they're not done already. Two of them are already working on them. And then let them know what the price will be, though we've already reached out to them. Gene called this week to either get them on the phone and for those who either wouldn't answer or didn't answer, he's put a letter in the mail giving them that price.
So at that point, but I mean, they will know how many feet they have in violation of what that dollar amount is, could potentially be?
They will, as long as they're willing to meet with us. We've already tried once to meet with everyone.
Right.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but would it be possible for the Aldermen to get an idea of who's in their ward and what they would contribute? Because I would, that would be advantageous for me, but I'm just wondering.
Get that list divided by ward? You know how you said... List of violations?
So the list that I gave you divided out by ward?
Divide, yes, and then what they're responsible for would be brilliant. I mean, that would be really advantageous for us.
We don't have that information yet. Those are the meetings that we've been trying to have.
But do you have to have them in order for us to get the information eventually?
If you want the footage...
Yeah, that'd be great, and I could do the math myself. I'm just looking at, you know, our situation worldwide.
But you wanna know the homeowners?
I do, I do.
Yeah, I would like to know that also.
Because I, you know, they call me and contact me, which is brilliant and keep doing so, but I would like to go back to them and say, this is how much it is, which I sent out already, and if I had linear footage as well, that'd be brilliant.
Would you like to know the addresses first or you want it all at one time?
All at one time would be perfect for me.
So then it'll probably be later next week after we do that footage?
Perfect.
So Dave, final question on that stuff. So once we determine all this footage and how much this is gonna cost, where does that money come from?
Well, we budgeted money on sidewalks, but I believe some of that money is being used for the city sidewalks. So we will have to find, we also have a nuisance abatement line that we have not used all of either.
Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, David. Up next, Chief Steiger.
Good evening, everyone. You got my report. One thing that's not on the report, I am happy to say that the 18-year-old female that we had talked about signed up officially yesterday. She comes to us completely certified. She passed her state exams and everything recently too. And part of the agreement when I talked to her and brought her on is she does live outside the city limits, so I've set some criteria on what I expect her to respond on and everything so it makes it safer being new and young and not living in the city. So that's all been laid out. And I did talk to her about using her as a promotional tool, trying to show that females can do the job too. And she's agreed to be a little bit of a promotion tool, so I'm happy to say that that's in the progress. Biggest part of what I've got going on is all grant stuff. You guys approved the increase in that radio thing. I got those on order. I'm being told 60 to 90 day lead time on that. The 2020, 2022 ARPA grant, they've officially given me permission to start working on that, so I'm getting the bids together. I'll have those to you for the next meeting for approval. And the 2023 DPS grant for radios, I got that in by the skin of my teeth, sat down for about five hours and got it all in. We put in for eight radios and a couple of repeaters for our trucks. Total cost of that $72,000 and that is a no-cost grant thing. I did talk to Happy and we talked in the past about next year we are gonna be probably working with St. Genevieve County and St. Francis County about going for a firefighter's grant. So I've started giving them some of the information about call load and stuff like that. So I've kinda told them that we intend to go for that. Whenever it comes to that point, I'll have to ask for official permission because that will be a funding match of 5%. But for now, we just started forwarding the information that they're asking for to get the grant ready. It won't come up till like September of next year. Open, any questions?
Did you say 5%?
It'd be a 5% match.
In addition to everything you've done and you continue to do, Chief, I want to commend you on the work you've done at the school. That was exciting. I saw in your miscellaneous, but I wanted to pull that out and say thank you because the kids enjoyed it, they learned a lot and we really appreciate it.
We're glad to do it. My guys are doing a great job.
They do. That's great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, perfect.
Thanks, Chief. Any committee reports to speak on? We'll move to a public hearing at this time. The mayor and Board of Aldermen will hold a public hearing to consider the rezoning of 51 St. Genevieve Drive from an R1 single-family district to an R2 general residential district, and we will open that public hearing at 6:14.
So we received a rezoning application from Gabe Dunsey on 54 51 St. Genevieve Drive, May 2nd. Filing fee received May 15th. Meeting noticed up and sent to media May 17th for publication on the 24th. Meeting notice mailed to applicant and all adjoining property owners May 18th. That advertised the planning and zoning and Board of Aldermen meeting. Planning and zoning was held June 1st. There was a 5-0-3 approval to recommend the rezoning to you here this evening. And that brings us to tonight for a public hearing.
That's the corner property, right?
It is.
Yeah, very corner. So is this just for part of that property or is it for the whole?
It's for part.
Part, okay.
The other part is already zoned accordingly.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Thank you. Anybody in the gallery here to comment during this public hearing? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing at 6:16. Move to public comment. See anything out there? All right. Move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would, and I've, I've never done this before, so I'm not clear on process, but I would move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of resolution 2023-47. It seems like we'll have more conversation about that later in this meeting and I don't understand, I'm, I'm just unclear on why we would add that prior to that discussion. If we could approve, I move that we approve without that in the consent agenda if possible.
Okay.
I also have another resolution, 2023-42. I have some questions about that also. Like to have that taken off the consent agenda for further discussion.
So 42 and 47, you'd like to have taken out a consent agenda and discuss individually?
That's the motion I think we're looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of resolution 2023-42 and 2023-47. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So is the intent to then discuss 2023-47, I guess during...
End.
And same thing with...
We can discuss 42 now.
Yeah. Alderman Donovan, would you want to discuss 2023-42 now?
Objecting to this purchase and stuff, but just kind of concerned, I mean, you know, we're talking about $14,000 here worth of boardroom equipment and stuff. Have we tried any of these or, I mean, you know, these are $600 chairs. Have we just looked at them as a picture or have we...
No, they came by with a demo and staff had a chance to sit them and try them. I had tried, I had gone to MBE, kinda took the tour of all the furniture that they had. These seemed like the least expensive, at the time $450. You can tell prices have now jumped up sadly enough. Thought they were comfortable and then they brought one down. Everybody had a chance to try it and everybody seemed to be very, very happy with the way it felt. They're a little larger, kinda like these. They're well, they're for this type of use. So I think they're, they're a good choice.
That's why I was curious about, so it's one is that we had something to look at of it, maybe a picture, because it's a pretty avid expense, but I have been through that chair thing before and it can get complicated.
Yeah.
So...
I have a question about this as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Does this include any of the furniture for City Hall or the police department after the remodel?
No, this is solely on the boardroom and the boardroom table and the boardroom chairs. The other part...
Is there... Go ahead, I think, I think you were about to answer.
Yeah, the other part is for discussion at, during the work session.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the plans are to go with the table instead of a...
It's, it's, I'm saying table, but it is a dais type of table.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. It's got the, it doesn't have wainscoting, but it's got, it's fairly well-designed. They can bring it in, put it together. And we can do it independent of, and it was easier to do that instead of trying to bid it with the project because the contractors may not know what that cost would be.
Sounds like they're probably really nice chairs and will extend the meetings a little too long. We don't have like maybe just some wooden desk chairs that maybe might props a little.
Want us to look at those? We'll, yeah.
Specific to Ward 3.
So Happy, this is estimated delivery date February of '24, so that'll work within time of our remodel?
Well, after we approve the ordinance tonight, so I can get a time schedule as to what the, what the construction schedule is gonna be, our estimation is August to February. That's why we've put February in there as the, as the received date, because that would be at the end of construction when everything's in and then they can come in and put that, put the, put the dais in and all the chairs. That's an estimate until we get with the contractor to firm up the dates.
So do you need a motion to...
If you want, if you want us to proceed with it, yes.
Yeah, I make a motion to put it...
Just to approve, I mean, all you're doing is you're outside the consent agenda and now you're just approving it separately.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2023-42. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will save the other item for later on in the meeting. That's resolution 2023-47. We'll move to old business and begin with a second reading for bill number 4560. This is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Jane and Dustin Martin. Will allow guests lodging at 495 Jefferson Street.
I will second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4560 now becomes ordinance 4485.
Thank you. Move on to bill number 4561. This is a second reading for an ordinance approving a special use permit for the Knights of Columbus Council 1037. That will allow a four-foot by 10-foot monument-type internally illuminated changeable sign at 600 Market Street in an R2 general residential district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4561 now becomes ordinance 4486.
Thank you. We'll take us to a second reading of bill number 4562. This is an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2023 budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Take a motion here, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4562 now becomes ordinance 4487.
Thank you. This is a second reading for bill number 4564. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the Blaine Street Water Tank Removal Project in an amount not to exceed $35,240.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4564 now becomes ordinance 4488.
Thank you. This is gonna be a second reading for bill number 4565. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bales Concrete of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the individual property owner concrete sidewalk replacement agreement in an amount of $62.83 per linear foot.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
I'm staying.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one abstention. Bill number 4565 now becomes ordinance 4489.
Thank you. And second reading for bill number 4568. This is an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances, section 715.050B, billing and delinquency as set forth below.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Eidman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clegg-Harn.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4568 now becomes ordinance 4490.
Thank you. That will take us to new business. And this is just the first reading on tonight?
This is just approval.
Okay, so this is just approval?
Yeah.
Good. So this would be the approval of the low bid of Jokerst Inc. for the Progress Parkway Crack Seal Project in an amount of $5,963.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second.
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Move to a first reading of bill number 4569. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Dunsey Construction Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the City Hall remodel in an amount of $349,541.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Motion for a second reading?
Okay. Could we, could we hold up on that for a second? We, we, in the last, well, the last meeting, I intended, I was not at the last meeting, but we took exception to first and second reading unless, I don't know, I thought personally those occurrences should be rare and should be dictated by, like, if time is of the essence. Is that the case with all of these firsts and seconds? Like, we, I thought we, I felt like we set a precedent with, in the prior meeting that we would, we would probably not do that unless we had to.
So my opinion is yes, time is of the essence in these cases. I mean, you may disagree, but trying to keep this, this process going with City Hall because we've been dragging this out for a while and we're getting ready to have to move, so I've got a number of pieces working out in this case.
So wasn't the idea of not doing the first and second reading basically to give
public input on particular subjects?
Right.
Is not really a?
No, I, I agree. And in that case, I would second Alderman Prince's, yeah.
Motion. Okay, so I do believe, uh, Alderman Prince made a motion and then Alderman Rainey second. Okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And this is the motion to?
Second reading. Yes.
I object.
Okay. Take us to the second reading of bill number four five six nine, which is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Dunsey Construction Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri for the City Hall remodel in an amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Klughorn?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
I'm staying.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one abstention. Bill number forty-five sixty-nine now becomes ordinance forty-four ninety-one.
Thank you. Move to a first reading for bill number four five seven zero. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Jokers Incorporated for the Water Main Improvements Project, number two three dash nine four five zero, in an amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So before we get to the second reading, the reason we're trying to move this along is that we're looking at school. We want to get that water line completed on Ninth Street. So that's why we kind of, that's why we're wanting to push this one through.
Motion to have a second reading?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second reading of bill number four five seven zero. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Jokers Incorporated for the Water Main Improvements Project, number two three dash nine four five zero, in an amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Klughorn?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five seventy now becomes ordinance forty-four ninety-two.
Thank you. Takes us to a first reading of bill number four five seven one. This is an ordinance approving a zoning change from an R-one single-family residential district to an R-two general residential district for five one, or excuse me, for fifty-one St. Genevieve Drive, Track Two.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I believe that there was some concern with this being done expeditiously, Dave, because of some constraints in the meeting. Um, that's why we were going for a second reading.
Uh, this is a land purchase awaiting this rezoning, and it had been duly posted and no complaints from any neighbors, so the applicant asked her to?
With that information in mind, I move for a second reading of bill number forty-five seventy-one.
Alderman Prince, second. Okay, uh, roll call, please, Pam? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, this is for a second reading. My apologies. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Take us to a second reading of bill number four five seven one. This is an ordinance approving a zoning change from an R-one single-family residential district to an R-two general residential district for fifty-one St. Genevieve Drive, Track Two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Klughorn?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five seventy-one now becomes ordinance forty-four ninety-three.
Thank you. We'll take us to a first reading of bill number four five seven two. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a cooperative agreement with the St. Genevieve Industrial Development Corporation for the purpose of obtaining formal pro-proposals from developers to be presented to the city with respect to property owned by the city for future residential development.
Motion to approve. And I'll second that.
Take a motion for a second reading of bill number forty-one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll second.
Running reiterating?
Okay, I have a motion and a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is a second reading of bill number four five seven two. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a cooperative agreement with the St. Genevieve Industrial Development Corporation for the purpose of obtaining formal proposals from developers to be presented to the city with respect to property owned by the city for future residential development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Pam, could you do a roll call, please?
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Klughorn?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number forty-five seventy-two now becomes ordinance forty-four ninety-four.
Thank you very much. Any other business?
Resolution.
The, oh, yes, that's right. We gotta go back. Bill forty-seven. Twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir. Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Yep, forty-seven. Go ahead, Alderman Rainey.
So, so I asked for that, um, consideration because I thought there would be more, uh, discussion about the content of that resolution. Um, if, if I'm wrong about that, I'll, I'll stand corrected.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is just more or less establishing intent to further that conversation. I, I don't think it's formally, I mean, the way that the mo, the way that the proposal reads is more or less to, to establish our intent to proceed with that project.
Which I'm, I'm totally in favor of, yeah.
And it, of course, a formal, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but a formal bid process, I mean, that would run through that whole thing before we agreed upon any?
Okay, okay.
Amount.
City would have to, city would have to allocate. This in the last ordinance that, uh, that you all read was from the last discussions we had with IDC. Uh, this was in the meeting that we had with their executive board. These are the issues that, that they felt were the most important at this point to bring to the board and get commitment. So that's what you're, you're voting on with both of those and you, you approved the agreement. So this is, again, showing intent, that you're willing to put that road in, uh, but you still have to go through the appropriation and allocation and bidding process.
Alderman Rainey is satisfied with that feedback and is, the operative word is intent. I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three forty-seven.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, now we'll, we'll move to other business.
Now, is it they wanted to discuss it private?
Yeah. Okay. Then I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting and we will move to the work session. Session to order and move for, or, excuse me, move on to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to work session, agenda item number one. This is the, um, this is regarding the St. Genevieve County, the newly formed nine-one-one board. And I believe, um, Jason Shot, Major Shot is here to, um, address any questions and kind of present the proposal.
Good evening, everybody.
Uh, as the mayor said, I'm here on behalf of the St. Gene County nine-one-one Tax Emergency Services Board. As you're aware, the, the tax passed on April the fourth and it's estimated to generate about six hundred thousand dollars annually in taxes. Unfortunately, we won't see any of that tax money until October, November timeframe, and we won't know what our annual collection is until the end of twenty twenty-four. With that being said, the tax board has pretty much, uh, since we formed, gained two expenses, major expenses. The first one is for the normal dispatching services that you get for fire, law, and EMS. And the other one is an upgrade to the infrastructure that's in the county, that the equipment that dispatches that service to you. The dispatching services for a year is about five, or is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The upgrade to the infrastructure is estimated to be at three point two million dollars. That upgrade will consist of new towers, antennas, receivers, equipment, uh, it'll be in a digital format. Right now, our format is a, a VHS high-band analog format. Our, our current system is close to thirty years old, and the reason why we need to go to digital is because of the modern build, especially in commercial buildings, block walls, metal buil, metal ceilings. These handheld radios cannot get out of those buildings underneath our current system. So if you have law enforcement, fire, EMS, in a situation, they're calling for help, there's a lot of spots in this county and in the city that our dispatcher will not hear us. So changing that over to a digital will actually generate ninety to ninety-five percent coverage in a building on a handheld radio for us, which is considerably more than where we're at right now. So before the, the tax passed, the city paid twenty-seven percent of that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is roughly about thirty thousand, uh, quarterly, uh, total for about a hundred and twenty thousand in a year's time. It was split between city, county, and EMS. So the, the tax board is coming, uh, requesting, you guys to think about, hopefully approve, to continue to supplement that revenue, uh, the, the same amount that you were paying, supplement that revenue for the dispatching services, uh, to the St. Gene County nine-one-one tax board. That way, if the three entities pay their portion yet, the taxing, uh, board can focus on the three point two million dollars, the tax dollars coming in, on that three point two million dollars until we pay that off. And once that's paid off, then we can start picking up the nine-one-one services that the three entities would be paying. Questions?
That's twenty-seven percent. I guess this has been allocated between our departments, fire, police?
Based on the amount of calls, isn't it?
My, right. My understanding is, uh, when, when St. Francis County took over in twenty-ten, I believe it was, based off the amount of calls, uh, it was broken down into percentages. The county has the bigger percentage. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think EMS has maybe around seventeen percent. You guys, the city has around twenty-seven percent. So it's broken off of, by call volume.
Jason, have you met with the county or EMS yet?
Uh, not EMS yet, but I have met with the county and the county commissioners did approve. They go ahead on their side.
For the full, uh, for this year or for?
Well, it'll be, you know, we're looking at a three point two million dollar project here. So I'm guessing anywhere from a three to five-year timeframe, the three entities would continue to pay their percentage. And granted, as we get tax dollars in, that ebbs and flows, we, it could be sooner than that. I don't, I do not estimate it being more than five years. By five years, we should have had the three point two million dollars paid off with the, the tax money.
So the county is going to, um, have the, the sales tax assessed and they're still going to make their, um, original, uh, payment for services?
Correct. They'll be paying their, their percentage.
I mean, I guess I, I feel?
That's kind of like a double tax, isn't it?
Well, it, it, you could say, but I feel like when the proposal was made, that this was going to fund the nine-one-one, uh, dispatching services. And so this request is kind of outside what was proposed to the taxpayers at, at, at the vote.
I was not the one presenting that, so I, I couldn't speak to that.
I'm not trying to kill the messenger.
I know, I know.
But, you know, and so that's what, I'm scared that we're going to get this feedback is like, hey, we voted to, and so in our mind, I, I guess as a council and as a city, we thought we were going to be freeing up this twenty-seven percent of the services that we paid, the hundred and twenty grand a year, that we were going to be able to start using that money for other repairs and services that we had as a city. So it's a, it's a tough ask for me because I felt like this three and a, three eighths of a tax, uh, percentage was going to be a big chunk. And I, I was, you know, blown away by the fact, and I know a three million dollar upgrade is needed. So it's, it's a tough ask for me.
Right, and, and we have no money in the account right now, so dispatching services have got to be paid for.
Yeah, and, and that's why I could see, you know, maybe say in the first year while the taxes started and, and you guys got up, you know, speed on that, I, I get that. Uh, because, you know, you're just getting those quarterly payments from those three entities, um, and it's a straight pass-through industry dispatcher, you know, so you, you know, you guys don't ever probably see it in your bank account. I don't know how, how it's set up, but basically it's a straight passer.
Right.
Uh, so I can see for the first year, they need some funds to get this going, because otherwise you're going to have to take out, have working capital to pay, you know, your dispatch. So if we cut you off, bull turkey, the first year for sure would be, I don't know how you would do that.
Oh, but this is assuming that these upgrades are going to start immediately.
They are. They're supposed to be finished by twenty twenty-five.
Where do we pay the twenty-seven percent out of now just general revenue?
Yeah, it's part of the budget for the police department.
It's budgeted, right.
Through the police department. That, that's their, their, their department.
That seems like a double tax, but anyhow, and this six hundred thousand dollars is just whatever it ends up being?
That, that's what it's.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it's five hundred and fifty thousand, it's five hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, right.
So how are you, how are they gonna pay for something with a variable number there? I mean, they pay whatever they get, or how do you amortize that loan to pay for that three point two million dollars based off of an unknown amount of tax?
Well, I mean, I have an idea based off of previous years.
Sure.
That's never down due to higher tax, so.
Yeah, we've taxed ourselves to.
What, what's the goal for, um, the nine-one-one board for, for the infrastructure, the three point two million project? Are you guys going to have to take out a bond for that and, and be able?
The board will probably take a, a loan for that.
Okay, well, um, so, and that'll, you know, start sooner, because if you want to be completed with these upgrades by twenty-five or twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
That's what the company is saying. It would be all completed by the end of twenty twenty-five.
Jason, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, just trying to get at a handle on this big of an expense. Um, you know, we're in partnerships with St. Francis County to maintain this whole system. So how are they going to pay for theirs?
I, I guess they're taking a loan out on their side. They're, they're actually higher than three point two million. St. Francis County side is actually like four point three.
Right, but I mean, how are they going to generate revenue to pay for that?
Well, they just passed a tax, not, right before we did, didn't they?
Right, they, they've had a board probably for two, three years now, the tax board.
And that's on a sales tax?
Yes, it's identical to what we passed. Correct.
So you said you need it for three to five years. Would it be possible or feasible to have it to the end of twenty twenty-five with a revisit or an option at that time to see how much you have in the coffers, just so we have some wiggle room, if you will, with our constituents? I'm just trying to get this laid out. If you think it's going to be three to five and it's variable, uh, we're here to support you.
Sure.
Don't think we're not.
Sure.
Just so we can answer this. And even though it may not be a double tax, that's what the feedback's coming across to us. Um, I think two years with an, an option would be something I could address with my constituents with. That's what I would be comfortable with. But I'll do whatever you guys think.
Uh, one issue that I've had with, with this board, the city has no representation on the nine-one-one board. We've, we've never had any stake in, in what happens or what is imposed upon us because we go through the county, through St. Gene County, and even before, we were at St. Francis County, uh, those services were provided through St. Genevieve County. So is there a way that St. Genevieve City can, can obtain any representation on the board now that there's a nine-one-one? Lieutenant Pollock's on the board. For St. Genevieve? Lieutenant Pollock is a board member.
Did you hear that?
Pollock is on there. Lieutenant Pollock's on there, but, or?
Lieutenant Pollock's on there, Eric.
Okay, okay.
Who appoints the board members?
The commissioners appointed the board members, but in April, they will have to file for election.
Oh, is he in the elected position?
Yeah.
Taxing.
I'm not ready to make any decisions tonight. That's why it's a work session. So, I think it's, I mean, I'm not, and I, you know, it's a...
I agree with Joe.
I agree with this too.
I'm not opposed to...
No, I'm not.
I'd like to get some more input and see who's going to chew my butt for, you know, continue to fund dispatching services through general fund plus the sales tax.
One question, I'm sorry. One question that was brought up to me is, you know, we're going to spend, or the county's going to spend, you know, $3 million to help with this upgrade. And my people are wondering why we're not spending that money when we have a, I mean, compared to the rest of our city, a fairly new building up there that was built for dispatch. What would it cost if we were wanting to do that, just so people know why we're not doing that?
Do what?
To bring our 911 back here.
I'm not in a position to even answer that. I won't even know what that cost would be.
I'm assuming if all of our other equipment is, we'd still be spending $3.2 million to upgrade that plus to upgrade the building itself, I would imagine. So, we're probably looking at...
It's towers too, correct?
Right.
Technology on towers.
There's, I believe, eight towers in the county, and maybe all but one have got to be replaced. One tower in the wine garden area is actually a telephone pole with a 50-foot antenna on it. So, there's no wonder we can't get out with our handhelds. Just keep in mind, I know dispatch, we will have to, 911 board will have to go into a formal agreement contract with St. Francis County. And so, those July payments are coming up. So, this is where we're at.
What is our current, but we're paid up through the rest of the year. We have to make our payments till...
We're not paid up, but we've got to.
Well, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Till the end of the budget year. And then we'll look at that again when we talk in budget.
We have to make the July payment and the, would that be the last of that Q3 for us or Q4? Is that our fourth quarter, or is that... July payment would be the third payment of the contract or the fourth?
Yeah.
So, we've got to make two more payments then per, okay, per our existing agreement?
If we have the October one, do we get the October one in September, or does it come in October? If it comes in October, it's the next budget year.
Yeah. So, I'm wondering. Because I'm, are they, have you seen, when are we going to get the new agreement? I mean, if this wouldn't have passed, I would assume we would have went back to it and got a new agreement to renew it, the agreement.
So, the agreement is through January. So, it's on a calendar year based on what the county's fiscal year is.
So, we have to make the October slash September payment?
Yeah.
So, we have to make six more months of payments, two more payments for sure, to the 911 board?
That payment is basically going to our agreement now for operation of the current system?
When the county formed this board, the county's responsibility for 911 ended the day they appointed the board. So, now all the responsibility falls on the 911 board.
So, that payment will go to the county? And then will it funnel to the...
The payment will probably go to the 911 board because...
Eventually.
Right. Because the county no longer has responsibility over 911.
Do we need to do anything that...
I guess out of curiosity, Jason, I mean, is this situation, I mean, I guess in the, in the St. Francis County, there's multiple municipalities contributing?
Correct.
Is that a relevant question to ask, or are they asking the same thing? I know you said...
I couldn't answer that. I don't know.
I agree with Joe. I'd like to have some more information and stuff, but I'm just one. I, you know...
With the new board...
I'd have a hard time approving this if nobody else is. You know, because I guess we're all on this together, all of the cities participating and stuff. I don't want to be the only one out there paying.
When do you meet with Kendall?
His meeting is the 26th, I believe, this month.
He's not on the 911 board, is he?
No.
Okay.
He doesn't live in the county.
Oh, okay. So, the commissioners were able to appoint the original board, and then they have to be elected after that?
Correct. The way the statute drove, the commissioners appoint the sales tax board, and then at the first municipal election, they have to file and be elected.
Again, we appreciate the information.
Yeah.
And we are...
If you guys come up with questions that you need more answers with, the mayor has my number or email address. Somebody shoot me an email with the questions, and I'll try to get things.
Can you let us know, can you find out for sure and let city administrator know when the EMS meeting is?
Sure.
And it'd be curious what questions they ask you.
Sure.
And, you know, don't take any of the comments that I've made as a negative and stuff. I think we're just trying to do our job here and have the whole story before we...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Take us to work session agenda item number two. This is regarding a handicap parking spot at 450 Walnut.
So, Alderman Steiger requests that we do have some more discussion on this in a work session. Their request is to designate a handicap parking space in front of 450 Walnut Street. Barb and Jim Grine own the house. They are here. Ms. Grine was at the April 27th board meeting and during public comments was talking about that. Alderman Steiger then went over and looked at the situation and felt that it needed additional discussion. Same with Alderman Iger.
So, Happy, to get a particular spot like that, I mean, what, is there a certain set of criteria that they have to meet, or how do we determine?
It's a public street. It would not technically qualify for a handicap parking space because you don't have access on the right-hand side of a vehicle for a lift. But what you're designating is that somebody that is infirmed has a space that's reserved on a public street for that type of access.
So, I take it that this particular space is a single-family, not a rental or...
Correct.
Is it permanent residence?
Yes.
I mean, we've done this multiple times throughout the city, you know, like on 4th Street and stuff like that. But we, I'm trying to think how to word this. Once, like if they were to move out, it's revoked. It automatically gets revoked. It only stays in place as long as they live there, right?
Not when you adopt an ordinance. Because it's, it would be an ordinance form, it would go into our chart that included.
But can be, but can be changed.
It can be then revoked by the board at that time.
In that same vein, are there any that are out there now that should be or should have been revoked?
I think there are a few that have.
I think we went through that. That's what we marked out.
We went through a couple a while, but I didn't know if that was specific to the owner that lived there or...
That drove to another question I have. Now, forgive me for not being on this mix to begin with. But, so you have, you grant a handicap parking spot. How do you make it so that only those two persons can use it?
Can't.
So, anyone can use it if they have a handicap? Okay.
And they're subject, if they don't have a handicap platform, they're subject to...
That's correct. I was just concerned if we're doing it for somebody in particular, what happens if they...
There's no way to really do that.
Okay. Thank you.
We ran into that one time, a residential in a downtown area, and they had no off-street parking, and they had basically one spot. There's a lot of retail, and we tried to figure out a way so that that resident had at least one parking spot. And it was, I don't think we ever really got it done. We kind of, it's just hard to do to have a designated spot for a resident when it's a public street.
Exactly. Okay.
So, Happy, who decides this? I mean, we vote on an ordinance, I guess, to set up. But I mean, who decides that the criteria that a homeowner has presented?
I made the request. I don't think there's anyone that decides it. But Jeff and I talked about it, and we think this is a good solution for the citizens that live there. And so, we're making a request.
Right. No, and I understand that. But I mean, doesn't somebody within the city, you know, oversee this thing and say, you know, we have verification that is the proper need and the proper use of that?
Well, if you notice, my recommendation is not to do it because I don't think it applies to what the handicap designation should be on a public street, which is for the public use for a public purpose, which would be downtown, across from Valley Schools, where we have most of them at this point. There is a public need for it. This is more of a private need, and it's an issue between neighbors that I think the city does not need to get in the middle of.
And I've heard some feedback from some people, especially downtown people, who were like, well, we have problems with parking too, and we have problems with our neighbors taking our spaces. So, is the city ready to step in and help us make accommodations in whatever we need? In those situations, I think this is a really slippery slope.
I think we do need to be clear, and not that I don't oppose anything...
Mute, Eric.
Unless I cut him off. I hope I didn't cut him off. But, I mean, I want to be clear that we're using potentially this table to solve a personal conflict. And I have a problem with that, but I'm also not involved at the level that Jeff and Joe are. And if they can speak to otherwise, I'd be happy to hear that. But I don't believe we should create ordinance to solve a personal conflict.
Well, you mentioned a personal conflict. Where does that come into the mix here? We're talking about establishing a handicap spot for a person that needs...
But this is coming from when we had a meeting, and it says it was April 27th, when someone brought to the attention of the board that there were, during public comments, that there was conflicts with space and parking on the street. And that's where this is stemming from.
It's a common issue. It was due to trailers and trucks and all that stuff.
So, between their driveways, they have very limited parking spaces, and this would accommodate them to have some public parking places on city streets and still allow the rest of the residents to have public space too. So, it's a, I feel like it's a good compromise for the situation that they're in because there's a lot of traffic right in there in that little area. And in front of that residence's house, there's only a spot for one parking. So, if anybody else takes it, it makes it hard for them having that handicap need to be able to park.
So, have we ever set a precedence before?
I think you have, but again, it's been in tighter spaces than a subdivision that's been around since the '70s. I think it's been downtown or maybe on the north end of town. But again, you've got a list of where we have them currently.
And they have a driveway and a garage, I take it? I'm looking at the picture right now.
Yeah. I believe, I know they have a driveway.
So, they have a driveway and they have a garage?
Yeah.
So, okay.
How long is that?
So, do we just need a motion? Well, we don't do motions, so...
No. You know, what I'm looking at is, do you want us to bring an ordinance to...
I'm going to request that we follow the recommendation of the staff.
I concur.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And I think we should also look into the ones that are out there that need to be revisited.
We did.
We did?
Yeah. And that's what we, a couple of them were marked off. That was part of that review.
Right. Thank you, sir.
The mayor has a...
Happy, I'm confused here a little bit. We had two people agree to follow the recommendation, but then we had six other people here that may have had a different opinion.
Speak up.
No, the recommendation was not to adopt.
The recommendation is not.
Correct.
Do you want to bring in ordinance? I mean, that's...
I was just curious by the numbers. We had two for and two against and other people here, and we didn't hear...
Well, it's true.
Should it be just a vote?
I think I'm...
I don't really can.
No, just straw poll.
Yeah. Well, as an alderman, I'm still going to talk to my residents and see if they would like me to bring in ordinance. I wanted to have a discussion during the work session. So, I'm still reserving my right to ask for an ordinance to be, you know, so...
Yeah, finds that.
Yeah. Because we can't vote on it tonight.
True, true.
I just wanted a fair shake for everybody.
And I would ask, has the situation improved at all?
No.
Okay.
Every time he comes home, he parks right in front of the house. And usually, it's two or three vehicles. She will park in the driveway, but he will move the car over to our side. No one comes to the house can park in front of our house. They either park in our driveway or on another spot.
At what point does that behavior become a nuisance?
It's a public street.
So, our only option is a handicap spot?
Or you can make it no parking.
Two-hour parking or, you know...
Yeah. I mean, you've got, you've got a lot of options that are, again, aren't conducive for a residential neighborhood.
That's correct.
Yes.
Two-hour parking won't work for him. He will take and move his car up, put one over in it, and come back. And he will play that game the whole, until whatever time. And I gave him chances, like putting, he came with a RV, not, not an RV, a camper. Had it on the street for about four or five days. I was getting ready to call in and call the police, and he did move it in the driveway, over the sidewalk. But you can't give, if you give him any chances, he will not work with you. He will come back and park all his vehicles in front of the house despite. And he's told the police this, and I believe he told Joe and Jeff that, that he does it because he's fighting us, just to get back at us.
You know, Happy, I'm going to respect the two aldermen's opinion in this area and let this thing go through due process. So, if they want to bring an ordinance to the table, let them bring an ordinance to the table and let everybody here vote on it.
Everybody okay with that, that outcome? Move to work session agenda item number three. This is regarding the city hall remodel budget.
So, we've budgeted $450,000 for this budget year for the remodel, based on estimates that we had and experience on the police side and for this side, what we estimated for this side. And as you can see, my numbers, because of the amount that it, that the, so the city hall boardroom remodel was $50,000 more than what the police market ended up being for roughly the same square footage, that I am over budget, or will be over budget, if we make all the purchases. These purchases have not been made. This is just planning ahead. We have a number of other expenses that we have included in there as well, gas and phone and moving and all of that. So, the question is, we're moving into another budget year. This is coming out of our capital improvement fund, which is not dedicated for anything at this point except for paying loans off of certain equipment that we've purchased over the years. So, we have money left over in that fund, and that's what we have built up for this project. So, now that we're getting into another budget year, we'll be budgeting again for the revenue that will come in on the asset sales tax. And I'm asking if you would want us to budget extra to cover the costs of the furniture, or if there's something else you want to see dropped off, or if you want us to go with what we have currently and just bring it back and put it in the offices.
So, does that address Alderman Bennett's earlier?
So, I think what Alderman Bennett is talking about is what we would love to do, and this would be an extra expense, is since we're buying new furniture for this side of the building, if we could buy furniture for the four offices that are on the police side and get them something nice. Am I correct?
You are correct.
And what does that cost?
Don't know yet. I have not, we haven't gone through what they want, need for those offices. But I would say it would be roughly, we're looking at eight offices, nine offices on this side. So, you're looking at probably half that, a little less than half, again, what we have here. $67,000 is what we have, or sixty, yeah, $67,000. So, you're probably looking at another $30,000.
I think we go with what Alderman Bennett recommends as well. Probably good at doing so, I believe.
So, you're thinking of a $33,000?
Probably not $33,000, yeah.
So, you said this is coming out of capital improvement funds. So, what is that fund down to?
That fund runs, because we tend to spend it up. It's $345,000. We spend $235,000 for repayment of other, of our loans. So, we've got $100 and some thousand left out of each year out of that fund.
So, how is this going to fall on our budget year? Because this furniture's not going to be in under this budget.
None of this is going to be done in this budget year. Yeah. So, they'll have to get carried over to the next budget year.
Right.
Which is kind of what we've done the last two years because we intended on this to be done two years ago. That never got, we waited for the police department to get completed. Started looking at this, then we got delays. Then we included the city hall, and then we increased the budget at that point. So, yeah.
My personal opinion is, as we've made great strides in updating everything, if we need to take one more step to complete it, we need to take that one step and finish it.
Yep.
And just get it done.
So, I will say, just cautionary, that we are also looking at the outside of the building and eventually for the parking lot in front of the building. So, that's probably another capital improvement.
Yeah, that'd be another project though.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as the inside, we've been working on for a long enough time. Let's do it. Let's do it right. We've been doing it right. Why would we stop and, I don't want to say cut corners because it sounds like we're going for the Taj Mahal, which we're not. But I would like to do what we need to do to bring everything up to today's standards instead of making do with old stuff that we should have been replacing 20 years ago.
And once we're all done, we can sell off the old stuff or do something?
Yeah.
The only reservation, you know, to doing this is when, I know we've talked about it in years past, is just making sure we have a good roof. Because without a good roof, you know, we're going to have...
We had, we budgeted for an inspection this year, and we've done that. And we sealed up any, any spots... and we sealed up any, any spots that they were worried about. So we had that done yesterday.
And then removed the tree.
Thanks for refreshing.
They removed the tree that was growing up there.
Yeah, we're not growing any trees.
Obviously you have something in mind when you're talking about the outside of the building, just a little preview of the future?
I would like to see, we're going to redo the windows, so we'll probably pull all the shutters off. We've got the brick wall in front, but it's rock. We need to make some, some sort of improvements to plant life, something that shows city hall instead of the sign above the window, which is lame. We need something a little more, I don't know, just... Yeah, you know, sorry. I mean, it's just, I think...
Something more visible, something more modern.
We need, we need to do a facelift there.
Something more aesthetically pleasing?
And we need to redo the parking lot. Parking lot will probably get some sort of stormwater on this side of the building running out to the, to the creek and then redoing it all the way around the building itself. Because we have, we have dents and, I mean, it's just uneven. It's not a good surface. So, and then we may also look at paving that gravel lot.
So it's probably something in the same avenue of what we've done with police and then here and then another...
Yeah, and we'd look at, you know, trying to, you know, put signage up on the police side as well and some, you know, dressing it up back there. You'll see a big difference with the windows. Once they put the windows and doors in, it's going to look different. Much better.